... We are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve again this?
I've got anything to add to it this week before we hear it now?
All in favor?
Aye.
Post public comments. New business fiscal year 2018 audit presented by Mike Podliska of Anderson-Larkin Company PC. Consider approved.
Mike's here. He'll make a quick presentation. You all have had it electronically and now you just gave you the hard button version of your bookshelf.
All right. How quickly do you relate to me? All right, I am on page two. The independent auditors report. It's just a letter explains what we did, what rules we followed, and what conclusions we came to. First sentence of the first paragraph says, "We have audited the accompanying financial statements." First sentence of the second paragraph says, "Management is responsible." So although I get information from you guys, I put it together in the form of an audit report, ultimately the numbers that are in the recorder, the responsibility of city staff and you guys. So first sentence of the third paragraph, "Our responsibility as the auditors is to give you an opinion on those financial statements." And the opinion is not, "You made money or lost money," or "You're really good at what you do," or "You're really not so good at what you do." It's just that when we look at the numbers, it's a fair representation of what actually happened. Okay? So it's just, we took a picture of the numbers and that represents what happened during fiscal year 18. Last paragraph on the page, "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly." And in the auditing world, the audit opinions we give are, "They present fairly," "They don't present fairly," or "It's so bad I can't even tell." So the fact that your auditor presents fairly, once again, just means that it's an accurate representation of what happened, and that's the best audit opinion that you can get. Okay? A clean or unmodified opinion is what we're talking about. Okay? On page six, I'm just going to do some quick comparison, comparing some numbers last year to this year. And on page six, we have the changes in cash position of the governmental activities. Okay? So we're going to break the city into two pieces. We've got governmental activities, and then we have the utilities, gas, electric, water, sewer. Okay? All right, so the governmental activities that are everything that aren't the utilities. Okay? So about a third of the way down the page, we have total receipts of $4,508,000 in 2018. That's an increase of about $484,000 from the year before. So revenues are up not quite half a million dollars. Most of that relates to the library project that you guys were working on or actually finishing up during the end of fiscal year 18. Go about halfway down the page, we have total disbursements of $4,571,645. That's an increase of about $400,000 from the previous year. Same answer, the reason we spent more money is because we had that lot of projects we're working on. Overall, the change in net position, $513,000 loss. One of the reasons the governmental activities lost more money in fiscal 18 compared to fiscal 17 is if you look one line above that $513,000, we've got transfers. In previous years, over the course of the year, there would be multiple transfers made from your utilities into the governmental activities, usually the general fund, to kind of supplement what was going on in the general fund. In discussions I had with Gary as part of this audit process, he said to kind of get a handle on what was going on, you know, to see what did the gas fund really do revenue and expense wise? We went through the year without transferring anything. So the general fund is going to look worse than normal because we don't have the transfers that are in there normally. The utilities are going to look better than normal because we don't have any transfers out that we normally have. Okay? Next page are the utilities that we're talking about. Okay? Again, about a third of the way down the page, we have total receipts of $5,977,000. That's a decrease from the previous year. Why did revenues decrease in fiscal 18? Couple of things. We had capital grants decreased by about $400,000, and that was in fiscal year 17, we had a water project that we were finishing up. So we got grant money in fiscal 17 that we don't have in fiscal 18. Under disbursement, $104,000 in fiscal 18, we have $350,000. The grant project, the water project we were talking about, had about $500,000 less spent in fiscal 18 compared to 17. And then in the sewer department, we spent some money for capital improvements that we didn't have in the previous year. Okay? Again, we get down to a change in cash basis net position, $873,000. That looks a lot better than the previous year because we didn't make those transfers out. Okay? All the way to page 44. So in my experience of working with cities and counties and schools, the people in your position as council members or boards of supervisors or school boards or whatever position you're in, they want to know about the numbers, and then they want to know if we're doing things according to the code, or if we're doing things as well accounting wise as we could be doing. Okay? So on page 44, item Roman numeral 2A18, segregation of duties. I talked about this when we were here last year, I was talking about it the year before and the year before. Okay? So you guys, due to the small nature of the accounting staff, have duties that kind of overlap. One example would be, uh, my friend Sandy. I don't know if she does this anymore, but in the past, she might be up at the counter and collect a water bill that somebody pays. And she puts the money in the drawer and does everything she's supposed to do there. And then she might go in the back room and sit down at her desk and work on the accounting. Okay? She has physical control of the assets of the city, the check for the water, and she also has responsibility of putting that same information into the computer. That's a segregation of duties problem. She's in charge of the bookkeeping and the physical control of the asset. Not necessarily anything wrong with that. And I always use the example of, we need about 13 Sandys just to handle the receipt side of things for the city. Obviously, you guys aren't going to hire 12 more people just to take care of receipts and another dozen for disbursements and a few more for payroll. It's not feasible to do that in order to properly segregate duties, though that's what you would have to do. So there's not really anything you can do about it. It's going to be a comment every year, and long after I'm gone and long after you guys are gone, that's still going to be a comment for the city of blue and yellow audit. So it's something I have to report. Can you do anything about it? Not really. Okay? The next one, item B, is reconciliation of utility billings. The idea here is every month, you guys send out utility bills to the customers of the city. And the question is, does anybody ever, let's say we send out $50,000 worth of utility bills, does anybody ever say, okay, the accounts receivable was this much, and we sent out this many bills and this many dollars worth of people paid, and then we have accounts receivable at the end of the month? Does anybody ever check to make sure that that math works? As far as I know, the answer is no. You know, what that mean, you know, that could, if we were doing that reconciliation, that could show that money's disappearing. That could show that we got a flaw in our billing system, that maybe there's a group of customers that somehow aren't getting charged. So, you know, to keep better track of things, that would be an item that I would recommend. These first two comments, we've seen in the past several years, so they will continue to be comments in the audit report until we do something about it. And like I said, the first item we talked about, there's not really anything you can do about it. Okay? Uh, page, yeah, page 45, credit cards, item C. The city does not have a written policy that explains how city credit cards work. And what I'm talking about is, I assume that there are credit cards and you guys can buy gasoline or purchase things from time to time online. Well, is there a policy that says who has the ability to do that? Is there a policy that says Gary has to approve that before the road department guy orders something? And it's just kind of a better set of checks and balances to keep track of things because once something gets ordered on a credit card, whether it was approved by you guys or not, you guys are kind of on the pay for it. Item D, financial reporting. This is one that goes back to before my time, or yeah, before I started working with you guys, which is 10-plus years ago. When we took up over the audit for whoever the previous audit firm was, they said there was a group of accounts you guys had that were trust accounts. And a trust account is a legal, a trust is a legal entity that is set up saying, here is what purpose of the trust was. And so for several years, we've been continuing to show these things, that trust accounts, well, you guys are aware that the state auditor came in and looked at things last year, and one of their comments to us was, if it's a trust account, where's the trust document? Nobody at City Hall currently who was around when all this stuff was set up has any idea where any trust accounts were. So the state auditor's recommendation to us was to move them, so we did it. Items, item Roman numeral 3B on page 46, questionable disbursements. Okay? So whenever the city spends money on something, there has to be proper documentation of what it was spent on, there's got to be a public purpose behind why we spent the money. So the first item, Department of Treasury, at some point in time, some payroll tax deposits were not made on time, or some forms were not filed on time, and the IRS came in and dinged you with a penalty. And I will, I will tell you, and you can tell by looking at the dollar amount there, the penalties are harsh. And if I remember conversations with Gary correctly, there were several months that got, something got filed late. And we were able to get some of the penalties wiped off, but it wouldn't, the first one, basically, you did this wrong 10 times, we're going to penalize you once, and write off the other nine. So that's what happened. And, you know, obviously, the question is, what would the public purpose be behind filing a form late and paying a penalty while there really isn't a public purpose? The next item is a little bit more confusing. We've talked a lot about the building that we're in. When, at some point in time, we moved stuff out of the old library, put it in storage, built, did whatever we did to this building, and then moved the stuff back in. The council approved renting a spot for, if I remember right, $900 bucks a month, as, you know, for however many months it was needed. And then after the fact, it ended up, I think you guys needed more space, so you paid a little bit more than the approved amount for a period of time. And the gist of it is, I never saw a council approving the additional amount. So that's what we're talking about there. Not that there's anything wrong with spending money on rent, it was just that the documentation wasn't in minutes.
Okay. I was involved in that because they rented my space. They rented two rooms, and when they got moved, they needed a third room. And so Lois called and asked what a third room would cost, and she said that was fine and just, that's just what they paid.
She brought it to us, but that doesn't mean we had a, maybe we didn't have an official act or something.
Okay? So once again, not that big of a deal, perfectly understandable how it happened, but as the auditor, if I see something like that, guess what? It gets to be in the report.
Business transactions, we'll stick with rent for a minute. Okay? So whenever the city does business with you guys or spouses of you guys, or spouses of city employees or city employees, there's some rules that you have to follow. Okay? So one of them says, we can get it passed, you know, okay, so let's say, I'll stick with picking on Sandy, she loves that. Sandy's husband owns a local hardware store, and the city from time to time goes and buys stuff at the hardware store. Okay? So they're allowed up to $1,500 a year of business, no problems. Just kind of a, you know, I know you guys want to keep the money in town if you can, so you do. If we go over the $1,500 amount, we need to put it up for bid, or say, we've got two hardware stores in town, and we're going to do business with these guys one year, and we're going to do business with the competitors the next year, still with the idea that we're going to keep the money in town. No problem there. So we did business with Wiggy Enterprises, which provided concessions for the pool. No problem there because we put it up for bid. So anybody who wanted to could bid on that same deal. And so the rent, while we approved that we were going to rent it, but did we attempt to, you know, did we put it up for bid? I don't even know if that's an option.
Their last payment to me was the month before I took office.
Okay. Well, that changes things.
So I wasn't a city official when that.
Okay, so.
So the money that they paid me that December was the last payment, and I took office in January.
All right, so that, so did the pool thing happen before or after you took office?
The pool thing happened after I took office, and we did that, it was right.
All right, so I would.
But the rent for the library ended before I took off.
Okay, so before this thing gets finalized and sent into the state, I'll take that one out. I got no problem with that.
That's right.
Okay. Page 47, council minutes. The code says you have to publish minutes in the newspaper within so many days of the council meeting. There were some instant, some dates that are listed that it didn't happen. Sometimes that oversight on the part of the person sending it into the newspaper, sometimes it is the newspaper publishing things when they feel like they want to publish things. But one way for whoever's in charge of sending the minutes to the newspaper to get past the newspaper didn't publish it timely is if we keep track of, we emailed the minutes to the newspaper on this day, if that's within the time limit that the code allows, in my opinion, you've done all you can do. You know, you guys are dealing with a newspaper that publishes, what, once a week? So, and you have to have the minutes to them within two or three days before the publishing day, so the windows are small.
Right.
But if, if you can keep, just keep a log of when those minutes were emailed, that'll probably take care of most of these. Okay? Disbursements and investments, item G. Gary and I talked a little bit about this the other day, about what the city could do to fix this. Basically, the city's supposed to have an agreement with every financial institution, call the public fund, custodial agreement. So if you're going to have city money in Success Bank, we should have some sort of an agreement with them saying that the bank is going to earmark securities for amounts that the city is holding that's over and above what FDIC limits would be, or something basically, in the event that the bank goes south, you guys aren't going to lose any money. Okay? That's something we've had, that particular comment has been in the, in the reports for several years as well. Okay? Last but not least, item J, and this is something not that big of a deal in the grand scheme of things, it's one of those that I just have to report if, if I see it. There were three, yeah, three funds that had negative balances at the end of the year. In some cases, that's a, we spent some money on a project before we got our grant reimbursement for it, or we got our state road money for it, just more of a timing issue. So once again, if I come to the end, end of the year and we have funds that have negative balances, I'm required to report it. All right. Any questions about what we talked about, or any questions about anything else?
Has the response to all these questions been the same for quite a few years?
They have.
Don't you think we ought to work on at least getting a couple of them answered? Why don't there's?
The credit card policy actually is, is, we have, we have some policy, but not enough to cover what would satisfy the audit. I think the credit card policy is something that even Brenda gave me a copy of one, and I expect it will probably institute it pretty quickly. The fund balance issues, those are the things that we've been struggling with all of this year, which is one of the things that has been based upon our having reconciliations. I know that when we talk about reconciliation of the utility accounts, this is something that Brenda's been working on in general, about a lot of reconciliations. So I think that that's something that we've been working backwards on that for years. So I think that you're going to probably see a lot of these findings being addressed for what, in what we have been doing here in the last two or three months. Understand that when this audit was, was for the fiscal year of fiscal 18, this way, fiscal 18 was, was a very, very difficult year. We had a significant reduction of staff, even as it relates to producing the minutes. It wasn't that the newspaper didn't publish them when they received them. We were behind on getting minutes up. We had volunteers help us get the minutes done. So this was as much of anything of a problem with staffing that we had in fiscal 18 to get a lot of this stuff taken care of. Again, I, I look at these findings as something that's not very insurmountable, and quite frankly, except for the ones that are obvious in terms of staffing. The finding that we have about staffing for segregation of duties, you not only secure your findings, every city, you know, a small stature like us in the state.
We do, our office does about 70 audits a year, and that segregation of duties command is in 65 of them. And we work with the big boys and the small boys, so, and everywhere in between. It's just, there's, as far as segregation of duties goes, there's always something that we can do better. But I, my example of Sandy handling the money and Sandy putting it in the computer, you can fix, you can fix that. I mean, you could institute a policy saying that the girls up front are going to collect all the money, and the girls in the back are going to do all the computer posting. I don't know if you want to do that, but you could, you could do that. So it could get better and still be a comment.
The deficits can basically just be handled through a amendment of the budget at the end of the year, through the year, just to make sure nothing goes.
Sure, sure. Well, I mean, the, um, the first question I would ask is, okay, so there's three, three accounts that have negatives. Number one is, are, are all three of those funds still active? If they're not, then we just transfer, make a fund transfer from probably the general fund to that fund to zero it out. Because it's a, a project that we finished three years ago, and we just haven't done the bookkeeping to close it out yet. We talked earlier about transfers. The fact that you didn't make any transfers last year, probably, or could have had something to do with negative balances.
It did, and quite frankly, a lot of that was due to the fact, again, that we're trying to determine here what our cash position was. This was, this was the real difficult thing, because you didn't have the reconciliations to start with. I don't expect that we'll have any balance problem at the end of fiscal year that we're in right now. Reason for that is to spend a lot of time doing transfers. The only one that I expect have, it's going to be a little difficult to figure out how to finish off the Trails account. We still have about $50,000 that we need to put in there, but the intention here is to finish that one off by looking at the surpluses that we have in other funds and making that transfer by the end of the fiscal year this year. The others, we've already addressed, there are a lot of transfers. And I think that when we get our understanding that those transfer amounts, if you recall that the, we only had a consequence of the Trails account was the one that was still needing to have a fund solution for, I think that we would address that issue. That, that was part of the big work that we have done over the last three or four months is to get these accounts leveled off and some of them closed out.
Anything else? Thanks for your time. So, so like I said, I will get the comment about the rent. Ran completely out of there. Now, the, the one about we approved 900, but really paid 1,500, regardless of whether that's a related party or not, that's, that's a comment. But the one saying we, we should have put that up for bid and we didn't, that one's gone. Okay? So what I will do is make the changes, get it submitted on time, and then I'll send an electronic copy to Gary of, of the whole thing with the changes in there. Okay? Any other questions?
Did I spell my name right?
Did I?
Can you?
Can I?
Also, John Helbert.
I didn't catch John. I don't like saying my name.
Okay, help me out, Mr. Mayor.
The R in my last name needs to be an N.
Wiegand.
Yeah.
Okay.
John's is on the bottom.
And John is.
Just in the second.
Listen. And they got it right, that's all.
Okay. Anything else?
Mike, do we now need to approve that subject of those changes?
In my belief with cities and counties and schools, very seldom do I actually have the board approving it. So as far as I know, there is no code requirement saying that this must be approved before we submit it. And you certainly, if you, if you feel like you need to do that, I guess my advice would be approve it subject to the changes that we talked about.
I would go ahead and do that just so it's on the record.
I didn't hear you either.
I thought I would go ahead and do it so it's on the record.
Okay.
So, consider approval of a resolution approving the annual fiscal examination fiscal year 2019, we need a motion to approve that with the changes that were recommended. So moving.
Thank you.
John?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Consider approval of a resolution designated Davis County Medical Associates as the designated physicians for city improvement. Sandy?
Currently, Dr. Wirtman is our designated physician, and since he is putting his practice, we need to find someone else. This is a requirement from our workers' comp company. So I have a part with Davis County Medical Associates, and they said they would be more than happy to provide the service. So I have worked with Davis County Medical Associates, and they said they would be more than happy to provide the service.
Move to approve the resolution. Or do you want to ask for the res, first? Am I getting ahead of you, Dan?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Resolution design, design Davis County Medical Associates as a designated physician for City of Bloomfield.
That's a lot, ain't it?
Yeah. Was wanting you to interrupt me.
Scott?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Consider approval of a resolution waiving the requirements of the Bloomfield Code of Ordinance since chapter 168 for parcel ID 02018340 in Davis County Iowa.
This is the waiver that you directed to have us establish by resolution from the last meeting allowing for utilization of, and access to utilities for property that is annexable, but is not going to be annexed into the city.
So, just a comment before you discuss and vote. The mayor, after you, after you met last time and discussed this, called me a couple days later and said, hey, I had a thought. Has anyone talked to the Pipers about the housing incentives that come up? So I don't know if that has happened, Bruce, I know I haven't.
He did, but I just want to go ahead with this, the way, the way we talked about last council meeting. He did come down and talk to me about it, I just want to roll on with it. I've owned that land for nearly 50 years, but I don't want to change it.
Has anybody presented you the housing incentive plan as far as what it is?
He just verbally told me about it, and I think Gary did a few months ago.
Right.
And you know what, I just want to roll on with it.
I mean, we got to take the best interest of the city at hand too here, so I'm just, was thinking of maybe somebody explained it to you, and said, no, it might be something that you would consider.
It's not. Yes, Gary, extreme detail about it, and I just want to leave it like I've owned it for 50 years.
Motion to approve.
Go make the motion.
Darren?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Consider approval of a resolution amendment number one to an amended agreement with Iowa State University concerning the electric power research center.
So EPRC is, you know, who we've been talking to at Iowa State for the last couple of years that have assisted us with trying to do some evaluation of our infrastructure. They've helped us to do some analysis on what would be appropriate solar sizing, or if batteries make financial sense. I feel like we've got an incredible amount of value out of them. The membership is $5,000 a year. Last year was the first year of our membership, this would extend our membership for another year. I would also mention that we, one of the things that we've done with them is to participate in a federally funded research program, in which we'll have some time involved with that, but most of that time is doing the stuff that we already do and just sharing that data with Iowa State, and we'll be reimbursed for our time. So really, this is going to balance out in particular this year. I guess I'd encourage you to, our recommendation is that we move our, and approve that agreement extension.
I agree, I see value there.
Motion to approve.
Go make the motion. I'll second it.
Jack?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Consider a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a purchase agreement to acquire 112 South Madison Street from J. and K. Reynolds LLC for the sum of $15,000.
This proposal is based upon the direction that the city council gave to us in closed session to negotiate this acquisition. The $15,000 number is the direction that you did give us in closed session, and is now being presented to you for execution.
You get everything straightened out on here?
It's all been accepted and signed by the sellers.
Does anybody got any questions about?
No.
I just want to know which one it was, because remember.
No, I don't.
So you're going to buy that first one, we don't mind.
No.
Just kidding. I move to have the mayor enter into the purchase agreement.
I'm signing it.
I'm not, I don't know. You're checking.
I'll sign the check, be there, all right?
You probably will, I should.
Earl?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Consider approval of ICAP insurance renewal.
This proposal is being brought forward on an annual basis for renewal for ICAP. It's done with the understanding that is the intention of administration to actually go out and actively bid this renewal for next year, with an understanding that we need to get the information in advance, probably in October or November, so that we can actually take, establish the process for which we would review this. There is very specific requirements established by statute, and also established by our existing agreement with ICAP as to how the renewal process goes. And it would require us to probably have about a full month of due time. So we will be notifying potential bidders on this. We received a very active inquiry, and then shortly after the notice was put out, we actually got a third party that indicated the interest. So my expectation is, is that we'll probably go out in September to make a request for proposals so that this issue can be acted upon, I hope, by the end of the calendar year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Consider awarding bid for purchase of Old Hoist. I think I gave them out last meeting, and I give the bids back to Danny, but Claude Cox was 400, and Bruce Warman was 600. We just need a motion, I guess, to award it whichever one of them you want.
Move to award the sale of Hoist to Warman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Consider awarding bid for concrete work at Cool. Taylor just give these two that she's got up here, so we just see what they are. Let's see, that one's from Dan Lee Construction Remodeling, $22,860. Westone Concrete for $23,175. Kramer Concrete for $24,325.
What was the amount on that question?
$22,680. $23,175.
What was Kramer?
$680.
What was Kramer?
$24,325.
Did you say that one, $22,680?
$22,680. Is there any recommendation, or is it? Do you have any recommendations on? Anybody here have any recommendations?
Seen a lot of our local guys work out here.
Westone?
Yeah. Good work, backside 20 minutes.
Well, they're all local. The only difference in these is, I just noticed, Dan Lee and Westone have 1,800 square foot, and Kramer has 2,000. What is it?
1,800 is what they're total. Do they have their insurance?
Sean bid it last year, has he bid in, what he bid last year, and we're not the exact same, or?
It's higher.
Yeah. I'm just saying, as far as.
I don't, yeah, I don't know, 100%.
It's a lump sum bid, so. It's a lump sum bid, so it's by, by the number. Yep. It's not a per yard or per square foot basis.
These others are bid, I mean, their numbers are per, it's a per square foot price, but. I mean, other than that, they're all ident, they're identical.
Well, it's a bid, and the bid is low number, and they're all local, so I don't see any reason not to take the local.
You would say there is.
Like you're opening yourself up.
So you make sure if you don't take a local.
Is that a motion?
We need a motion to accept.
Make motion to accept Dan's bid.
Second.
John?
No.
Scott?
Uh, no.
Jack?
Yes.
Jack?
He said yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't hear you. Earl?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Discuss Boatman's pond with Kent Byrne.
And I own a part of the water, but I'm not the owner of the dam. And this winter, with all the ice, the dam's, the spillway is breached, and the water's coming around the backside of it. And so therefore, the water's, the level's probably about a foot and a half low right now. But I don't think it's, it's a problem that's going to happen overnight, that that is going to really breach and, and cause, well, washout problem. But I think you guys all have, what, two sewer lines and an electric line?
A storm sewer, sewer, sanitary sewer, and an electric line.
So what I wanted to do was, and I think Jack Dixon, the owner of the dam, who, he's in the hospital right now, I think he's talked to you the past years about it. And so I may be out of turn, since I don't own the dam. But I just wondered if there was a way that it can be looked at and maybe head off a huge expense if we could fix it somehow. I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know anything about it, Darren would probably know more about it than anybody.
Aren't we supposed to be getting talk, in talks with Jack and about that here in the area?
Yeah, we have a, a meeting set for the 28th with the DNR, and Doug will be there, I believe. I don't think Jack will make it, but Doug will be there representing Jack. And the city will be there, and DNR will be meeting onsite. I think it's, I think it's Thursday that we, to go over and just look at options and, and begin to take a look. And I can tell you that we've begun to survey, we know that now the depth of the electric utilities, and we, we're in the process of getting surveyed, the, the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer, so we know exactly where those are in there. So since we talked, we've been working to try to get this resolved, so.
Okay, that's all I want. What time, Thursday?
It's 10:00 or 10:30, I don't remember, right off the top of my head.
That's a week, what's the date?
The 28th.
Week from today.
Week from today.
Let me get you the exact time. 10:30 on the 28th. And before then, we'll, I don't get no easement save up whose role is what, but we'll have that all figured out before we get there.
Okay. Thank you.
If I answer your question?
Yeah.
Thanks, Ken.
Discuss proposed ordinance changes to clarify location and enclosure of swimming and wading pools and other permanent bodies of water.
So you all remember last summer?
Yep.
You told me to do this in the winter, and missed it by a day or two. But where, where we are is we, we took a little different approach. Let me just say, in total, what we're talking about is pools are already, if you read, carefully read the ordinance, you can interpret it to say that pools are an accessory building. And the accessory buildings need to be in the backyard. They require, and pools also require a fence, and they require building permit. All of that is under our current ordinance. But we don't really define what a pool is, and we don't clearly state that a pool is an accessory building. It's just implied, right? So these changes do things where we would change the term from accessory building to accessory structure, so that it would be a pool or other things. It specifies at what point a pool requires a fence. So it would be at 18, 8 inches of depth with less than a four-foot sidewall, then it requires a fence. And it specifies the height of the fence and, and, and whether you can get, yeah, I think there's an opening size that you can't squeeze through, so a child can't climb through the fence. And those are all according to state recommendations. And then it specifically says in the, in the permit, building permit fees, that a building, this swimming pool requires a building permit. You would need one for the fence anyway that goes around the pool. And I'm not going to double charge you, but we just, so that we can specify, make sure that they're in the backyard where they're supposed to be and that they are fenced off, we just want to know that you're putting one up, right? That's the idea behind this.
It's a permanent bodies of water.
So we can take that out if you want, that's what several of the communities have. And when I look at this, I think there are three permanent bodies of water that might fit this definition. I don't think you'd look at our creeks, none of them are that deep. But when you look at the pond behind, well, you look at Boatman's pond, I assume it's more than, maybe not right now, it's not a foot and a half deep, but most of the time. And then you have the hospital pond, and then there's one just north of the mutual center. Now, if you guys want to strike that out or not, I'm just picking that up from code that has been recommended by other, you know, from other communities.
What about the cemetery?
And I said, you're right, the cemetery pond, I forgot about the cemetery.
Why would I put a four-foot fence around my four-foot pool?
No, if you have a four-foot pool, you don't have to put a fence up.
But if I have a 47 and a half inch pool, why would I put a 48-inch fence around there?
The bigger pool, I guess, I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, I'm just, that doesn't make sense, if they're going to climb in the pool, they're going to climb over the fence.
You have to have a number, right?
But shouldn't it be tall enough that it makes a difference?
Right, I'm just saying, I, and I don't know, I don't have an above ground pool, I don't know what their standard height is. I think most of them come up.
I don't know, mine's right at 48 inches.
So you have to have, you're going to have to have some line, right? And so 48 inches is what other communities have, and that's where we pulled the number from. Do you want to change it? We can change it.
I don't know about fencing these ponds.
Like Chris said, you, you want to eliminate that, that, that can be done. Question about pool and pool fencing, Heather, there's, I know in other places, in other states at least, there's issues related to attractive nuisance, and that if you have a fence of some sort, then that's kind of sufficed by saying, you're not supposed to go over the fence. If you went over the fence, which is a barrier that indicates that there isn't so, supposed to be something coming in, that in fact, if you've done your due diligence, an attractive nuisance would be, you have a. you have a pool, but you don't have a fence, and people could come in and go over pool because there isn't any implied barrier with the fence. But I know that's the case. Well, that, that's, the point here is, is that if you have that barrier, it's the individual's problem, uh, unless you, if you have a barrier that's put up, I don't know what the.
But that's my insurance company's problem, not the city's.
If in fact, there isn't a fence put up, yes, it's, it's not the city's, but it is, it is the city's if in that fact, there is not an ordinance in place that is enforced.
But our current ordinance requires a six foot fence around any pool. And we don't spec, I mean, that could be a wading pool, right? We don't, and so what we're really trying to provide is some clarity here and make it reasonable. So that if you have a four foot, the four foot is the height, then, and you have a four foot fin, uh, pool, whether it's a fence or, apparently four foot's the height that people feel is suitable for to keep.
Somebody's not gonna kinda jump in it.
That's what they're trying to do. You're trying to prevent kids from going right in the pool.
But why is that the city's problem?
Ju- just like other nuisances. I mean, that's why it becomes a city's problem, is trying to keep things safe, keep things from happening.
My pool. Like, I don't care if people come.
But people could say that about, you know, letting the grass grow really tall in my house. I mean, you know what I mean?
It's an insurance issue.
It also would be one, and this is something that perhaps needs some research, but the fact is, is that without that kind of an ordinance, there's also the deep pockets situation where, you know, it, it might be a, uh, somebody that is, has their own pool, that they could get sued. But likewise, the city could be sued if in fact, there is no enforcement, or for that matter, no ordinance that restricts a, a passage into, into a private property for, for a pool that somebody could trespass into. I mean, my experience with this is, is that the city has implied liability if they don't do anything about it. And that's where you get into these deep pocket lawsuits, where you go after the, uh, entity that has the money that you could sue.
Let, let, let me provide a little context too. We currently have some above ground pools that are probably four feet, that don't have fences around them right now. Under our current ordinance, I'm required to go out and have them put up a six foot fence. This ordinance makes an adjustment to allow your pool that is four foot tall to not have a fence. So we're actually lessening those restrictions and providing some clarity. So I, I just want to make it clear that we're not trying to be overly restrictive here. We're trying to actually just get it well defined so that it's clear to everyone what we're trying to accomplish.
And we also have a recommendation from the, or planning?
Planning and zoning commission, yeah. They, they also had brought this forward and said they thought it was, um, you know, you directed me to take some things to them. I took it to them, and they made this recommendation to you.
And so they're somebody that's, we authorized to meet and discuss and, and give us an opinion, and they have, and we haven't done anything with it.
That's correct.
I have a pool. It's not in my backyard because by new ordinance, if you live on a corner lot, you build your house facing the white side, so I effectively have no backyard.
So a corner lot's the side yard, it's all side?
Right. My pool is over four foot, but it also has a six foot fence around it, so it's, but I just wanted to make note that if there's other places in town where somebody has it, side yard versus backyard. And I think the people that own these ponds that are around town are gonna be mighty upset if they have to go put fence around their pond.
So let me also say that where we are in the process here, this is, I'm bringing to you for your review and your recommendation, so that next meeting, we can have a public hearing on it, on it the way that you want it. So that's, we're, this isn't, we're not voting on this tonight. This is for you to discuss like you are, and then give me some direction on how you wanna change before the public hearing.
Would existing bodies of water be grandfathered? Do we have any ordinance now restricting permanent bodies of water?
Not nowhere.
So anything that's already here could be grandfathered?
I'm gonna direct you that direction.
Yeah, it could. That's what council chooses to do. Does it have anything there about covering it too, as opposed to putting a fence around it? And you could also, you could also put in the code some sort of cover over it, so it has to have a cover as opposed to just having an open pool. I mean, what you're really trying to do is keep people from being like, oh, let's go jump in that.
I have a bigger issue with the eighteen inch pool with the neighbor's little kid coming over and getting in a small pool and coming over and getting in a big pool. That's, because eighteen inches or less doesn't have to be in a fence, is that right?
Right, so they're thinking about like a wading pool, right?
Yeah, so to me, that would be a bigger hazard. But I don't know that any of the pools in town are permanent structures.
Well, and we, we don't call the pools permanent structures. We're talking about other permanent waterways, right? We're not saying that.
I don't like, I don't understand. Hey, let's drain the thing. If you can't see it, there's no sense in having it. Accessory structure. Why can't somewhere in there you put pool?
Well, we do talk about.
I know you talk about pools, but it doesn't, under the definition of accessory structure, it doesn't say pool, so how do you know that's what it falls on?
I think that's the same, you guys can change it. I mean, you can, you can change it whatever you guys want.
So this, this.
Because if you call, you used to call a pool like an outbuilding?
This accessory structure covers all garages, sheds, arcworks, everything.
But all that needs to be listed.
Well, we, okay. The reason it isn't is simply because we use a general term that would qualify anything that you're going to build in your yard, rather than trying to guess perhaps someday you wanna have a, you know, I don't know.
Or in Bloomfield.
Right.
So it makes it a little more clarified to meet our language. In my opinion.
And then again, I would, the next step for this would be to put in front of the council, legal council for review, once I know the final languages that, that you want, so, you know, take their input as well.
What was the, if I'm not mistaken, the initial reason this was brought up is because we had people with pools in the front yards, wasn't it?
Yep.
So we're throwing a wide rope to?
Really not. That's what I'm trying to say, is we're not changing, the only thing that we're changing is lowering the height of the fence and defining what a pool is. That's really all we're doing here. We're, we're lessening the requirements, not making them more stringent, and just being a little more clear.
Where do the goldfish ponds fall in? Eighteen inches? I know, well, I'm just asking here because I know there's a couple that have landscaping that have koi fish, and I'm just asking.
Right, yeah, so if they're under eighteen inches, then they wouldn't require a fence.
Or they'd be a permanent body of water. They'd be a permanent body of water.
I would also submit that things like decorative landscaping ponds, fountains, or anything like that, I've seen ordinances where they talk about, uh, surface areas to limitation. I mean, if you have a surface area under X amount of square feet, it wouldn't count.
And, and you know, I guess the other option is we don't have to do anything at all. I'm just, you know, I was asked to bring them back in the winter, so. And the mayor was kind enough to remind me.
A fence won't keep them out, because we got one around the playground over there, and our toys end up in the parking lot daily. Razor wire. Razor wire.
That's crazy.
Some hard wire and razor wire in the sea.
Okay, I guess we can all.
Right, so I don't feel like I have clear direction from the council at this point. So if you'd like to send me your direction and let me know what you'd like me to do, I'd be happy to do that, but right now, I'm hearing mixed signals.
Well, I, I see where you're lessing the restrictions and trying to get them out of the front yards. I don't want to include ponds, whether with grandfathered or.
So we can strike the permanent body, is, is everybody agree with that?
Yep.
Strike permanent bodies of water. Okay. Is everything else okay?
I would like accessory structure more defined.
You'd like to see examples of what those might be?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because when I read this, nowhere in there do I even think about swimming pool.
Okay, now, it is spelled out in the building permits, but we can do that, and we can take that same list and put under accessory structures as well.
That not correction?
That's clear. I understand. Okay.
And we're not including koi ponds and fountains?
No, because we're getting rid of the permanent structures. They're just swimming pools.
Okay, great.
Yep. So we'll bring it for a public hearing at the next council meeting with those changes, okay?
Don't forget to put it on the agenda.
I won't. It was here this time. We'll get it here next time.
So does this, this also includes garages?
Yes.
Because my neighbor called me about wanting to build a garage in his backyard. But he didn't build it as tall as he wanted because some height restriction?
Oh, so, yeah, I, I'm glad you mentioned that. So one thing we did do is, um, there's some, there was, uh, there's conflict in our code. R one and R two restrict accessory building height to twelve feet. And in, uh, the section one sixty five seventeen, I think it is, talks about accessory building restrictions and limits the height to fifteen feet. So I did change this so it would all say fifteen feet. As, so that, just, just to eliminate the conflict and go with the higher height. But is, does there any reason we would need a garage or accessory building that we built that would be taller than fifteen feet?
Fifteen feet to the peak?
Yeah.
That ain't tall enough, I think.
Okay. Where does it need to be?
I'd make it twenty.
Because I'm making my garage, I'd go.
Well, if it's attached to your house.
Yeah.
It can be the height, there's no restriction on it, but if it's separate. It has, it can't be taller than, or? I thought it was taller than the house.
Uh, it says fifteen, well, one says twelve and one says fifteen feet.
He was wanting to build this in the backyard, which his yard falls off, so if he don't have to be taller than the house, he can get all the height he wants, because his yard drops down four foot.
No, it's, it specifies either twelve, and one part of the code is twelve feet, and another part says fifteen feet.
So if you want me to.
I'm trying to change that to twenty.
To twenty? Everybody agree with that, twenty?
I don't know. Then you're getting machine sheds in town. I got one behind me I don't like. Do we have codes restricting what they can be built out of?
We got codes, we're working how big they can be as far as footprint.
Yeah, it can occupy more than thirty percent of the backyard. It can't be more than, um, you know, and then there, there are offsets and all of that. We don't currently restrict the material that they can be built out of. At some point, we're gonna talk to you about building code. I'm not ready yet, but I assume at that point, we'd be talking about, we, yeah, the reason I wanna talk about that is because if we're gonna incentivize housing, we want it to be built the way we want it built, right? So at some point, we'll wanna talk about building code, but I'm, you know, we're just not ready yet.
Can you get a twelve foot or an eighteen foot? I don't know.
Well, it depends on how tall it is, or how wide it is for your height of your.
You can't on the sidewall, you gotta have two feet inside wall. Those clearance for your.
You, you can get it a foot. Well, would everybody be okay with eighteen feet? You know. I'm just thinking while we're changing the ordinance, we just wanna address everything in it, instead of having to.
There's always the opportunity to go for a variance too, you know? But I'm not trying to get every single one to have to go through a variance, but I know it's, the problem is if you have a home in an established neighborhood, and you have a view that you like, and somebody comes in and puts a garage there, and you can't see, you know?
I know the feeling.
That's detracting the value of your home.
Do you think that's gonna matter if that building's fifteen foot tall or eighteen foot tall?
Depends, you know?
Oh, really?
Depends on where you're at, where your, where your house sets to that garage. And if you get a sewer pond now and then you don't get to later, well, my, that'd be awful.
I, I see you pointing down.
See, now you get.
Well, I see that it'd be allowed to be built. Twelve foot, you're still not gonna see it out your window.
Yeah.
I can see Dan's point, you know?
Well, I, twelve isn't enough.
I couldn't, don't mind high enough to put a lift in, so.
I mean, fifteen, we change it to fifteen, but I'm just thinking if you wanna put a twelve foot door in, you know, and you wanna put it in the end, you probably gotta have at least eighteen foot to, to do it. Well, once again, it depends on the width of the building and, you know, the pitch you're, pitch your roof. Pitch your roof, really. Well, about the lowest you're gonna go.
Four, twelve.
I'm just thinking that while we're going through the ordinance, if there's changes we wanna make, we guess we'll move them all along.
You guys, you guys that are builders need to.
Go eighteen.
Well, that is.
Eighteen, yeah.
I think eighteen would be.
We're talking about eighteen. Put eighteen in, do a little research and bring it back.
Okay, well, let me just, mind you. No, we're gonna address that later when we do the building code. That's what I'm saying. We're gonna come back with building codes, and we're gonna talk about some other things at some point. So even whether we put in fifteen, eighteen, or twenty five, I'm gonna come back to you at some point and say we're gonna ask you to move this out of this chapter and look at more comprehensive structure evaluation, so.
So we're good with clarifying accessory structure, taking out permanent bodies of water, changing the height to eighteen foot. Getting up there.
That's what I've got for notes. Pretty green.
We're getting better.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything on that ordinance? Consider a motion to eagle authorize the publication of residential utility usage and cost per house on the city's website.
So we've talked about this in the past, you know, that we've got that map with, you can click on a house and see how much the energy costs are, and the, the energy efficiency rating. You can already get all of that by walking into the city office, and if you say, I wanna know how much are the utilities at this house, we'll hand them to you. I just wanna make them more easily accessible, and I'd like to have your formal sanction to do so.
Great idea.
Have a motion? I'm sorry, can't say that.
I'll make that motion.
Double motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, propose. Claim, do we have a motion? Approve the claim. We'll go approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment? You couldn't just leave? Report. Care to get a report?
Yeah, a couple of things. Been going through the personnel manual business here and melding together two different sets of documents into a base document that, as I've indicated before, was, um, a personnel manual from, uh, the city of Oskaloosa. I'm going to be sending out to you, um, a portion of it in the next two or three working days electronically to all of you for review. Understand that we're talking about a document that's gonna be approximately a hundred pages in length. And it's my intent to probably send it out to you in three weeks, and that we can discuss these things probably over the next three council meetings. It'd be my hope to get, uh, the second of the three groups, uh, out in advance of the next council meeting, although I have the understanding that we'll be asking you to make a review of that until the following. It's gonna be pretty comprehensive. Um, we're gonna still have to have some internal review of, of the document likewise for an actual action, action, uh, would be recommended for, for council to take. We received, uh, uh, two million, twelve thousand, and a few more dollars, uh, yesterday. That is now, uh, into our, um, general ledger, our operating account, and it will be dispersed, uh, into uh, the accounts that actually establishes the, the, the street improvement fund. What that will do is increase, um, our fund balance by another two million plus from what we approved with, um, going into the budget season. What that will do is increase, um, our fund balance by another 2 million plus from what we approved with, um, going into the budget season. Um, hopefully, we'll spend some of that money even before the, uh, end of the fiscal year occurs, but understand that in the budget that we have, um, we actually showed an expenditure of $2 million this upcoming year, uh, without the revenue to offset it, so we now have that revenue going in now that we know the exact amount. Um, so, there's already changes going on from the snapshot of the budget that was approved from last week. Um, uh, personal note, I am going to be out of the office, uh, tomorrow, and I'm gonna be out of the office a week from tomorrow. Um, I've got some personal business and medical business to take care of it.
Gary, are you gonna run that personnel manual by?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Will we have paper copies that we need to look at?
Yes, we can make that, I'm just trying to get it out as quick as possible as far as giving you opportunity to review.
This thing would be easier for us to look through.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, I agree. Um, but when I send it out to you electronically, that's when I'll be sending it to you folks. Just so that you all have it in your hands as, as quick as possible. That's all I have.
Thanks. Chris?
Yeah, so I'm gonna start with, from Danny to start with. Um, we're gonna, just, this is a heads up, it, it, there's a, um, we're gonna be replacing some electric line in the Redmond addition, some underground line that is, has been deteriorated. And we anticipate there being potentially some new house, structures out there, new homes, and so we just wanna make sure we get that infrastructure up to par before that happens. Um, Danny did go out to bid, uh, or tried to go out to bid for that boring, he got one vote returned back in, and that was with Archer, and it's about $4,100, so. Um, it, it's underneath the threshold, I guess what I'm saying is we'd like to go ahead and get that boring done next week if possible. It, I'm, by underneath the threshold, I mean, it's underneath the, the administrator's signing authority, it would. And, um, we meant for it to be on the agenda, I guess what I'm saying is we'd like to notify you and move forward with that unless somebody has an objection.
Are you encasing that?
I don't, I don't know the details, I assume we usually put it in conduit, I, I know, I think I heard him talking about putting, I don't know, I don't have the, I don't know. But, uh.
Yes, put it in that.
Yeah.
Are they?
Yeah.
You sure?
Yeah. This stuff is already, yeah, it's on it.
Okay. I know that we have done that with all the underground we've done in the last year, just to make sure that we need as many changes we can pull, and I just don't have the code I'm looking to look at for sure.
Makes it last longer too.
Yeah. Uh, they're gonna be doing, on, on the Culver project, there's gonna be some asbestos testing on the bridge on Monday, they're also gonna mark the center line and the boundaries. Um, I've talked with the contractor, you can ask the contractor questions if you like, but because of the testing schedule, my understanding is that the demolition permit will take a couple of weeks after the testing. So, while they were hoping we'd get in next week, apparently that's not gonna happen, so just, did I say that correctly?
And there could be some utility issues.
We'll work through those as well. But we'll keep people informed on Facebook and on, uh, the website, and we'll let Karen know as well. I think that's it for public works, do you have anything else you can think of?
I've seen a lot of complaints on utility bills as.
Yes.
Is that normal, or is that just now recently coming up, or has there been a lot of people in asking, or?
Probably wanted their old meter back.
I know, I don't deal with those, I mean, I, I get.
Well, you got your DPW hat on.
Yeah, I know, but even the DPW doesn't usually get the utility bill complaints unless somebody thinks there's a meter issue or something like that, so I don't know, maybe perhaps Andy knows that we've had a higher number of complaints than.
The girls haven't said it there.
Well, I had a $13,000 electric bill with 316 pine and nobody was living there this last month. So we'll probably, we'll probably get back to me. I asked, I called and asked if they was gonna put me on a payment plan or what they was gonna do, and. Shit that I researched.
Your bill, we'll make a plan of this stuff.
John, you did, you check in with the office?
Yeah, I, I have every confidence that they will get back to me when they get it figured out.
I know that this time of year we get more complaints just because everyone's paying more right now, right? And it's into winter and money's tight, but I don't, like I said, I hadn't heard that there's more than normal. I, I know there has been some, a little bit of discussion about the new metering and what that might mean, but I don't think, uh, it's abnormal for this type of process, these guys say that happens every time it's in the town. You, you make it visible, people are gonna say something. But if there's something you'd like us to address, we'd just do that.
Or if we can follow.
Watch that on social media, you're gonna get some. There was a couple people that talked like their bill was, oh, thousands.
Yeah, I, I'm familiar with a couple of them. Um, but it, let me just put it this way, if any of you have someone personally reach out to you that's concerned about their bill, please have them contact us and we'll do everything we can to look into it and make it right.
And we, we have had some inquiries, I know, and it, some, some of them it takes a little bit, it's not an answer that maybe you can come up with in a few seconds. And I have heard Kyle a few times this week say in particular, you know, I've, I've got my things printed out front of me, if you can give me just a couple minutes, I'll be happy to call you back. So, really encourage them to give us a call, and this week in particular, statements went out. Yeah, everybody got them by the 20th, and so as soon as they go out, of course, that, there's a little bit more, um, excitement, and, you know, every once in a while we get one of those odd ones that gets through, but just if they call the office and.
Or email, email is great because it gives, you can give the details and let us get back to you with the bills, so.
Bills that are coming out right now reflect the very cold February that we had, so that's gonna be part of it right there.
It's amazing.
Yeah, half of them say there's a lower and half of them say it's twice as high.
Well, the lower people, they're a little quieter, they don't.
So I'm gonna switch hats here.
You're gonna have to check, Jack, so I think you.
Yeah, I think I said I'd noticed all of you that the planning and zoning commission is gonna meet on Tuesday, uh, in the conference room. Um, we're gonna talk about potentially, so that lot 33, or lots five and six, so lot 33 is the land right behind the city hall to the south where that house came down. Um, it's currently zoned residential, but it's owned by Hamilton, and I anticipate there being a request to rezone that at some point, so just wanna get planning and zoning commission thinking about that. And then I wanna make sure that they're aware of the, um, develop, we're developing the housing incentives, just so, there may be some changes that are requested as, as those come on, right? So, we're just gonna meet and get up to speed. Speaking of the housing incentives, I'm hoping that within the, uh, I don't know that we'll have it by the April 4th meeting, possibly. Um, but certainly by the second meeting in April, I wanna have to you a proposed, what, what we've talked about, the way I understand what we've talked about for housing incentives, and have it written up for your review so that we can get it approved. Um, the, uh, Iowa Rural Development Summit is third weekend in April, and in the past, we've talked about Dan and Darren attending. We're getting to that point where I've gotta start firming those, that up and booking rooms if, if in fact you're going.
That's the one in Brownell?
Yes. Uh, do you know, at this point, any, you have any better sense?
I don't have any better sense.
You told me to speak plain, you asked that.
So, check back in a week or two. Is that where we wanna be? I think.
I'm good. That's why I did, I'm good, yeah.
Oh, you learned that.
Oh, yeah, I was hearing. It was one of them one that was worth a hundred dollars.
When did you say it was?
Uh, it's the, I think it's the third weekend in April, I'll give you.
Third week?
Thanks, there, no, it says, it's not when we have a council meeting, so.
It's earlier than that.
Okay, I'll get to the date.
April 11th and 12th.
There you go.
I got it in my account.
Okay. And if you want me to book rooms, where you let me know. Sooner is better on that, cause it's a small town. Construction was starting, I'm sure.
Where's that?
Brownell.
Brownell.
I'll try. I get my schedule, it's day before the first.
Definitely, yeah, definitely, yeah, you want me to book rooms?
I'll let you know next week.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll.
I'll know more about my schedule here before long too, so.
Right now, I don't see any reason why I can't, but I'm not, I need to double check.
Good. That's all I have.
Fire chief. A couple of things, uh, probably got caught up a little bit this week, did some stuff at home, so I plan on meeting with Gary very first part of next week. Set down and review the codes for burning in the city ordinance for his city plan that he had for us, want me to review a few other things. The other thing was, uh, yesterday afternoon, I went around using the map that I was given by Frontline on the Stormside replacement. There's four green flags, they're on little fence posts placed within the city, I've got the address. Uh, one of them is behind the back, behind, uh, left field fence at the Bald Diamond, High School Bald Diamond Fairgrounds. At the fair board meeting last night, I got the approval to stick that pole there and start to locate there. The other one is located. The, uh, PM Fleming's Corner Lot, I can't remember the address, I've got the addresses right down, out here. The other one's gonna be out by the greenhouse on the corner by the Zaboll Nix. And the last one is out at, uh, Kevin Ritz. Uh, rest stop there where the broken pole is broken off, so, it was gonna need a new pole anyway, so. So according to the map, that's the proper placement that puts the courthouse square at the center, where all four circles intertwine, and that gives us our best coverage. That part covers the new ball, baseball complex, the fairgrounds for all their events. This one out here will cover the late north part of town, the hospital and the nursing home. This one out here will get us around the country club and, uh, McGowan Farm, and the one out here will get us as close as we can to the industrial complex, the girls softball diamond, law center, and part of McGowan Farm there too. So, I'll give those addresses to Dan and Chris, we'll need to get, talk to the homeowners, easements, and whatever we need to do, and get located so that we don't put a pole on top of something. Uh, the other thing was the Friends of the Bloomfield Fire Department was meeting tonight at the same time. Jake sent me a text, they're wanting to know if it's okay, we're wanting to move forward on our wall, and we're wanting to get bids for concrete work. Is there gonna be a problem if we put it in the Tri-County Shopper and the Democrat to advertise for those bids?
How much are they, the extent?
They could be, the one we got was $12,000, and that was two years ago, and that was just way too high, so.
Big a wall you building?
We're not building the wall, we're trying to get the concrete around the front. That's what we've been doing all our fundraisers for, so we get that done, the granite is out the monument place to be etched, so that was bought several years ago. So we're just trying to get this completed so everybody drives by just doesn't see a blank wall, and they're really trying to move on it this spring. So, the first part of it was, we need to submit some bids so that we can see what this is gonna cost us. So we're just trying to advertise for bids, and we thought we'd use the two local papers.
Sounds good.
Other than that, everything's been going good, phone calls are pouring in, can I burn? Responses, I'd rather you didn't, cause if you do catch that on fire, I can't get to it, it's just too muddy. So everybody's been pretty cooperative on that part. Other than that, everything is ready, we know the shoe's gonna fall, when it dries up, they're gonna burn, it's gonna happen, so. That's all we got right now.
Do we have something in place, did we ever put it in place, I know we talked about it, if you burn, lose control and you're getting charged?
Right now, the policy is if you call in, say, call the law center, say, I'm gonna burn, it gets away, we don't, cause they did call. Um, but if they call and they're burning this 25 mile an hour wind, we'll probably be giving them a bill. But if you don't call and you burn, you're gonna get a bill, especially if I can identify the property owner who set it. Those are the tools that were given to me, I have to do it because those fires are the most time consuming, they tear up the most equipment, you wouldn't think they would tear up, be that big a deal, grass fire, but they're horrible. I remember. So, that's part of the discussion we have, the, we'll read before the city council that we get up, the charges that we got, put some teeth into our building. And I did find out a couple of things from the sheriff's department that I'll bring to Gary Monday, how we can put teeth into our building and. That's all I got, unless there's any questions. You don't have anything?
No.
Main Street?
We've been working on a business, a new business and, um, expand new business incentive plan, we're about, we're about ready to have that finalized. We're hoping on the April 4th meeting here, we'll be able to present it to the city and let you, fill you guys in on what we're, we're planning on doing and what we're looking to doing. Um, April 8th, the week of April 8th, Centerville and Bloomfield have a partner exchange program. They're going to be sending folks from Main Street, Centerville over, they're gonna fill out a survey, it's part of our accreditation this year, so we have to do it. We're gonna send folks over to Centerville, and then we'll report back, the executive directors of both will go to the, um, other board and present the findings of that, and I'll share that, what they say with you guys, if you wanna know. So, I'll let you know about that. Um, we have been, um, I have been kind of doing more of a county-wide reach as far as letting businesses outside of the district know that we're there to support them as well. We've been doing that through our luncheon learns, which we had one, uh, yesterday, which, we had 24 people, it was full in here, so those have been going very well. So we're reaching out to the county, I've also been making calls to the different businesses to kind of let them know that, so they can start being part of some of our events and having, you know, bringing their product into town to be able to, you know, offer what they have, um, at our different events and things like that. Just so that we're, you know, extending our reach out to support those businesses within the entire Davis County. So, that's a, it's an actual initiative, we're actually just, you know, making a concerted effort to go do that. Um, last thing I have, um, I'll be on next week too, we're, um, Justin Oswald and I are going to Seattle, Washington for a national convention, which, that will be fun, yeah, fun. And, um, I think we'll learn a lot, um, with what's going on at the national level, so, we'll report back, uh, what we learned, there's a lot of neat things with Main Street America that they have, and, uh, so we'll, we'll share that information with you as well.
Uh, I wanna just a gentle thing, at that luncheon learn yesterday, I think I was one of six guys out of the 24 that were here, so it was mostly women, then I would say, what would you say the average age was? Maybe 40-ish, right? So there was a broad spectrum of well-established businesses that are trying to up their game, as well as some people that are new business owners, it was pretty cool, and Jen Cronin did a great job.
We'll be carrying that on with workshops, um, you know, the big thing right now is how more, um, brick and mortar retail can meet, uh, competes with online shopping. It's a, it's a, it's a big deal for them, and so we're gonna be talking, learning more about that, working one-on-one with them as well.
Council, it makes.
Danny stole my thunder. You did have some, did you have some dates that, uh, for karate days and?
Um, June 22nd is karate nation days.
And then we are past through town for ride ride.
Yeah, July 23rd, we're past there. They have to be, they want them out of here by 2:30, so vendors need to shut down at 2:30.
Where are they coming in, yeah?
Coming down Highway 2, then on to, by the fairgrounds, on through Jefferson Street, and then going to J40.
Do you know, if somebody's wanting to set up a booth to sell something, do they need to get a? Do you know if somebody's wanting to set up a booth to sell something, do they need to get ahold of the co-chair, be like Brian or?
I, that's how it was, I think, in the past. They send committees for each of those.
Is that who they sent? That's who I sent the person to ask me to, is that the correct person to send him to?
That's who I sent him to, Brian or Wayne. You're talking about RagBri, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
That's my call. Motion adjourned. Call in favor.
Sure for Monday.
I forgot your folder.
Yeah, it's ordinarily though.
Right around. Yes, yeah. Yeah. It'll be fun. Yeah.
I always wanted to. So it acts like if you're, like I was gonna say, and then you.
Sure, sure.
That's all I was.
I just figured you must have a couple of things ahead, you know, you're gonna be somewhere. Oh, really? Okay. I just wanna make sure, I'm pretty sure. Thank you.
You know, there's, uh, you can ask Mars for the math.
Right, like recommend like what we wanna do. Right.
Well, I don't, don't like.
Like as far as. Where we wanna get bids from.
She better take.
But I died last time. Dude, I'm parachuting.
Of course you already see how you know all sorts of.
I know, right? I told you, I wouldn't have got the D R. I have that problem. See you guys later. It didn't feel really right, dragging me out too much, but I just wanted.
If I'd known she was gonna react, so. She pulled him aside, we got hard and paying attention.
I, yeah, so I, you don't know, but I have to have you.
If I'd had that on video, we'd have played it tonight.
You know, just I'll get there.
Four foot the air and just about through.
Anyway, yes.
No, I just, I'm trying to give him all the ones enough for you and I'm like, oh, you know, you gotta be careful.
I understand with them too, that we're. I didn't like their, they were too aggressive. I understand, I think we're playing good things, I'm not saying that we're doing the wrong things. And then some of your map worthy process now of mapping all our. He claims it's gonna cost you eighty thousand or thirty years.
You know, Bruce, everything.
I just didn't like, you know, where it's gonna be made.
You were going, you tried to tell us that. Always, if he'd known this, no, he went out and.
Now, now, now.
I never did that. Didn't he try to say that, well, you know, I really like to drop and stuff, we're gonna put a trap right in here at my house. You can't shoot guns in the city, Chris, if you're big enough, you can't load them. Anytime Eric looks, he's using it, it's a ball that runs through me. He's never shot a trap a day, he's like.
So why did I have to turn down?
So, so if we pushed.
No, no.
So did he actually, did he actually serve prison?
The other accountant.
No, he, he got so lucky, he got fined.
If we look at them side by side.
If we just.
You gotta cash your taxes, you gotta run this cash, you can hit them out every day. That's why marketing, you can do it in amount, I think, at five, six times a month.
Theater actually still exists.
Checking accounts per se. So if you combine it together, you wouldn't have.
You know. You know, I worked theater and movies for a couple of years.
No, I'm not talking about shutting down, but. But where does, where does the negative come from? We can have. Open your stuff up and you send up a bid. You need to take the low bid unless you have.
Right, talk to me about this.
Unless you have a reason. Anyway, you're gonna come back home and say, hey, I was a little bitter.
See, we could have thrown Kramer's out.
I, I really.
Because he didn't get it in context.
No, I naturally, I just said no.
I was the account.
No. No, just be gone.
I'm not saying. That's what I'm saying, when it runs back. What does make, how can I get some stuff, cause I got.
I don't wait till.
I know, but that, I think.
Is that a challenge to be here to call you at seven o'clock? Why, oh, you can get me a.
She needs to have the. And that's another thing with you. We're gonna start doing some.
That is something we.
Do we have? We have a policy or anything, whether we take bids or whether we take quotes or.
Yeah, the, the quotes is, uh, one. Really to reject a bid is that you need to have had it in the form.
So, yes, and I, it's, there should be.
But can we not take quotes on eighty dollar matters, so that gives us a league win? There's, there's a sketchy by, there's a sketchy, this is, we just have to keep this. And it's different. Uh, we have.
Do it tomorrow?
Yeah. So the only. My dad in Centerville, so.
Well, probably do because we got.
Farmers and.
Town buildings, it's, it's based upon scale of.
There's a limit to you.
All the projects.
Doesn't matter, whichever works.
You probably got your stuff there to take.
I, yeah, I think that's what.
I'm sorry, there's something up there.
You know, you, you.
Now you're looking at illegal, which you, you don't take low bid without a reason. Daniel, he turned out to be a shit worker.
All right.
The next time they put up something to bid, say, no, he doesn't have the satisfactory work the last time.
Say, I'll see, no.
You know how this works, is you gotta pre-qualify.
Nothing.
Pre-qualification is a joke now at the state.
Well, I know, but that's how you get around them, eliminating.
When we, when my dad started the business, he had to give an equipment list, he had to have financial records. You had to start out on a small project and work your way up. Well, last year, I had a kid that thinks he's a dirt man and Kramer get a box in Wapo County. Either one of them had a crane, either one of them knew what they were doing. They got it done, but it took them twice as long as it should have, they didn't do it the conventional way and.
But they were proven by the service.
They, they got approved.
So, I mean, I, I, I think you're right, that, that's, uh, if you reject a little bid, there's gotta be some reason for it, I mean, you just didn't want them.
Yep.
But qualifications, I mean, they don't have to be put in the paper, I mean, isn't there different? Due for pre-qualifies is, uh, it's not administratively, but you have to list what you're requiring qualification. But I mean, for the bid to go out, don't you have to put it in the paper? And don't you have to do certain things in order to go out to bid on projects for government?
Only if it's over the threshold, you can just, we can just do a.
Couldn't she just call the, the three people and say, we're doing this project and only them three be allowed to bid it?
Well, I think if somebody else called women and wanted to bid it, you'd have to let them.
Don't you have to put that out? The school does.
You have to put it in the paper, but it doesn't have to be a very big.
Well, it depends on where they're.
That's why, it's a.
It's, it's probably illegal, he's probably illegal.
Well, just like.
You saw what Jeff's doing.
We, we bid a lot of work in Wapo County. A lot of times, they just put it in a tunnel courage.
Right.
Even though it's a two hundred thousand dollar job, they don't make sure it goes statewide where Iowa, Virginia, Colorado.
No, but I'm saying, anything that we do that goes out for bid, quote, whatever, doesn't it have to be published for two weeks or something prior?
Only if it goes, my understanding, only if it's over the bid threshold.
What's the bid?
If it's over the bid threshold.
Yeah, it's over.
So any bid.
Hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah.
Thousand.
So anything under a hundred and twenty-five is a bid and anything over is a quote?
Not necessarily, I mean, anything can be a bid. You can do bids, but by law, you're required to do bids if it's over that bid, and that bid threshold trend, it might be a hundred and thirty, but it's.
Now, and I don't know what the city's limits are. The county can just call and hire me to do something as long as it doesn't exceed. The, the, the range changes every year set by the state, like ninety-three thousand last year, maybe eighty-five thousand.
We have some of the same requirements.
That's the bid threshold number I was talking about.
We, we have some of the same requirements.
Well, see, they don't have to put it out for bid, they only get under that threshold, they can hire us a day later.
But we have, we have, uh, requirements locally that say we need to take quotes or bids depending on the thresholds. And I wanna say there's a twenty thousand dollar.
So if it's, so up to twenty-five thousand, or I think it's twenty-five, twenty-six, somewhere in there, we can just do that, right? Above that, then we're supposed to get estimates or quotes. So I, if I know that you do dirt work and you do dirt work, I can just call you each other, as long as I get two or three, we're covered, right? I can put it in the paper and I can go that route, but I'm not required to.
Right. So these sirens, is the city gonna provide the electrical to them?
I, I haven't gotten any details from them.
I haven't checked him about it though, since it's what he does. I don't, I don't know. They have to. Or they're gonna hire somebody to do it.
We, we weren't planning on doing the work, if that's what you're asking. Well, we've never talked about sending our guys to a wire.
So I mean, setting the post and putting the siren up.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming the place he's buying them from hooks them up.
How, you gotta get the utility too.
Yeah, well, I think in at least three of the places, probably not an issue, it's gonna be right on the.
I think he was actually looking at those locations to add the utility right there.
Yeah. That might have been part of his choice of.
And I, I think you're right, I think that whoever is providing the siren, it's okay, I can deal, they do the siren again and hook up.
Cause there's probably some electronics that they have to.
That's, that's my speculation, I don't know if you're certain.
Oh, they were kinda hoping, we, I talked to a major again, I wanted to bring the Santa house over. They were kinda wanting to rewire it. I think they'd probably like a little breaker box on it.
He said I don't have a.
I got a light bulb for that back.